What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at hundred big blind deep stack or eighty big blind as well. It's gonna be three bet pots against early position. So we're gonna be somewhere on the table and we're gonna try to work on our tree bet strategy against CP. So let's get started. How you get, how often does this call? How often does it raise?
Have you, have you looked at the chart yet? Or are we gonna start by just like trying to work it out?
Um, I've looked at them a little bit.
I think this does draft a little bit and I, I think it's like eighty percent.
Um. Surprisingly, it's gonna be better lot less than I would. But it's fine, right? So it's just kind of still a high frequency tree bet. But it's like Yeah. It's a majority call. I don't call enough here to be honest. So I had a quick look at the aggregated report. Uh, basically one or deep stack against the button. So under the gun button and a tree bat pot. And we bet eighty percent of the time. Okay, so I wrote it down here for you guys. And then it's a mix of twenty-five percent bets and fifty percent bets on the flop. And then I looked at what we were checking the most. Terms of board. So it's like they all have a flush draw. And they have two or three cards to a straight. Like the small one. One way or the other, right? Like seven, six, five, or one, two, three, something like that. With a flush draw. So it's kind of easy to figure out because we're gonna bet a lot based on like whatever we have the card of the flush or not. We're gonna base our strategy a lot on that. So we check when we don't have it. So that's gonna be easy. And then the other type of board we check a lot on was A side monotone boards. Like this one here. Uh, there was a few of that. So these are the spots we, we check a lot on. We check like fifty percent of the time. So this is basically what I looked at. And then if you wanna see. This is say it's under the gun raising. And we're on the button. Say we're a hundred deep. This is gonna be our strategy. So. A lot of calling with ace king. And then some three bets with like the queen jackson such a little bit. But to that one, I really work on post flop tree betting. So first figure out if it's a, the frequency of the tree bed and then second. I'll figure out the post what line. So five, four, four pair born. I think pair board are gonna bet small, like really, really small. A lot. Uh, let's just see here real quick pairing.
People like the spades and arts too, which is probably pretty nice.
Pair. Pair seems to be majority, not so much small, right? Usually we bet small a lot. There's, there's small bets like twenty-five percent about. Then. Hmm, almost no big bets. Actually, there is plenty of big bets fifty percent of the time we bet off pot. Okay, so it's gonna be tricky. Let's see. Um.
Twenty-five percent. Well, a lot of continues.
You wanna go twenty-five percent?
I think so. We have a heart and a spade, so. Big heart, big spade.
We're very deep and I think this hand wants to bet a little bit bigger.
I think we might wanna go seventy-five percent mostly because I watched this video from GTO yesterday about this particular topic.
Okay, I don't think we like, if we look at the reports here.
There was some like five percent or something.
Well. My understanding, there was almost none like. But it could be one of them. There's a five percent, right?
No, sorry. No, but I think this.
Oh, well, look at this.
I think this hand really only makes sense as a, as a small bet cuz like. You're not bluffing him off pairs and you're, and you're trying to get called their worst a size and king highs. So. I don't think really it makes sense as a big bet.
So why do you think it's a, a bigger bet? I think you're right here.
Uh, you talking to me?
Yeah.
Um, well, this, there was a video from detail wizard yesterday and it was about um, three bet pots and how you lose money and one of the biggest mistakes is you don't. See bets um, low boards big enough and it's if you, you would bet your uh, your over pairs. You would wanna bet them fifty to seventy-five percent most of the time. So uh, I think the reasoning is you also do that with. Most of the stuff that you do continue with.
Ah, very.
What I would add is though, if we had aces and kings, I don't know that they would want to bet seventy-five percent, but if you had like jacks, tens, nines, they would probably want to bet seventy-five percent.
Yeah, exactly. I'm okay with having bluffs in the big size for sure, but like I wanna draw those bluffs from things like high-low spades, like ace, three of hearts. Or like we have frequencies of like king six here, right? Like or something in that range. King six, I think makes a pretty attractive big bet cuz you can really blast them off some better stuff.
Okay, so from my understanding, it's all like the highest card is an eight, but it's almost like a seven. Alright, so it has to be a really low board. For in order for
Hold your pair boards and look for this spot.
Okay, so really low boards can be bad day. Really low, we need a really low board that is pair that has a flush draw.
Are they pure? I guess this deep, they're pure for batting probably aces and kings this deep, I guess, huh?
I think pretty much, yeah. If, if they have like a sliver, that's it.
What would you find is a really low board, threes, twos, fours, fives?
Looks, looks like sevens and under. From like you can see them on the left there. I think pretty much sounds seven.
Okay.
Actually, the big bet. But actually half pot though.
Yeah, mostly have pot. And the big bet does show up more with like high-low stuff. Like worse hands in our range. This hand is like not that low in our range. Doesn't really make sense to the polarize.
So it starts coming in more with the queen. Actually, really, the queens a lot compared to the rest. That checks a little bit, that kings a little bit, but even like the pairs, like I thought the tens and dimes are only half pot, right?
I always think that that size up maybe even more. Yeah. Guess where your hand if you have big size, you put your tens and small size and it's your queens or kings.
Yeah, this is a board here. Five, five, three is a lot more likely than five, four, four, it seems. That happens a lot. There are thirty-five percent of the strategies to bet big. And then. Yeah, so it's tricky, right? But it's a thing. Oh, yeah, I think.
What if it's rainbow? Is it drive the size down or now?
Yeah. Yeah, I think. Flush draw boards means size up a little bit. So like here, my reasoning, I wanna go fifty percent cuz we have the king and spade. And we can size up and then. Play on spades, play on high cards.
And we have the odds, you're out of suits. That's also important, I think.
So I'm going like half but here.
Yep. Perfect.
Twenty-five.
Is it, are we sizing up more with spades? So ace of spade is checking or
Sizing it more without.
Fifty percent?
King of spades.
King and spade or sizing up.
Without the heart ace.
Right?
Okay, so you don't wanna have a heart to block the back door. Okay. Spade, we can double barrel.
Well, with size cuz we know that also the defender defends has more suited stuff, right?
Well, I mean, checking is probably fine, right?
I'm not sure now.
It's probably fine, but I would always double barrel here.
Yeah, I mean, but. I'm double barrel too, but not big. I don't know what size. I guess half pot again.
Half pot again. Yeah, I think that's reasonable. You can still get stacked on river. I don't think this is like a hyper, hyper polar spot cuz. There are some hands that are way ahead and way behind. It's very wet. It's lots of equity.
I would check honestly, the more I think about it. I wouldn't realize my equity.
I'm just double barreling. I would go sixty percent here, but.
It's like if we're, yeah, for bluffing, what are we? What are we trying to bluff him off? I was just thinking like, can we get pocket nines without a spade default? I think the answer is no.
You, you don't wanna get raised here. Like if he just decides to rip like pocket tens or something.
Jack.
If you got the whip, then it's an easy fold.
So with the ace of spade, you wanna check? Is that what I see? Now we'll have the ice of heart. So this is just the worst kicker one.
Wants to realize equity here, I think. It's, it's good a lot. Ace, kings like pretty high up in range. It beats all the unmade hands and it doesn't really wanna have to necessarily call check raise, I think.
So while we're double barreling most of them, but not with the aces.
Well, the ace king does it out there. No spades, ace diamonds, king of clubs does barrels a lot. Uh, ace of diamonds, king of hearts, ace of diamonds, king of spades is in there. I guess that's for balance. I don't know.
Alright.
To balance the ones that are bluffing without any draws.
So. We may have a checking. Oh, my goodness. Let's check it. Wanna go check again?
Yeah.
Check and win.
Yeah.
Well, kinda, kinda the different.
Okay, what about this one?
So this V Pips a hundred percent, right? Mix of call and through bet?
Uh.
Mixes call and fold.
It's called fold?
No, it's hamburger man. Three slices.
Some of everything.
Three slices.
About like roughly equal proportions?
With the meat in the middle?
Yeah.
Or is the meat on the, on the fold side of things today?
No, I think the meat is in the middle.
I'm not sure how to lose a hundred big blinds with the queen high flop here, honestly. So I mean.
He means gonna be fantastic. So today we focus on what we do when we decide to.
Calling. I never three.
But like.
But it's a hamburger. And then
I was gonna say queen of clubs is my most passive suit. So. Well.
Yeah.
It's the uh.
But Ken, if you three bet this against me and if I don't know you, especially if you look like you do, like come on, let's be real. If you like, you're in the age you are, I'm folding ace queen off against your three bet here. Like if you're in unknown to me. Like I'm folding king queen off all day. I'm folding ace jack off all day. So. Could be pretty good.
Well, it wouldn't be all day. It would be until you realize I'm not actually the nit that I look like.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Alright. So do we drop a bet here for sure, right?
This is like a pretty unattractive bet.
I'm sure.
I mean.
So we go small.
Gotta bet.
If you're gonna bet, small's fine, but I don't really feel.
I'm bluff catching.
If marginal lands or second pair.
This board you kinda wanna size up a little bit, right?
Yeah, fun.
Not with the hand though.
We're so big that we bet small. Is that right?
It's not that bad.
I don't think we have. What do we want him to call us?
So we bet.
It's just a three bed pot. We just have pocket kings and pocket queens in range.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, of course. Oh, great.
Yeah. Who could have foreseen this coming? Now what?
I don't know if she can dump it yet.
We got a jacket spades is really bad here, I think.
It's cold.
Man, I wanna call with the
No, but Ken, that's, that's backdoor, backdoor. Like we can, we can river Broadway, we can.
Can we roll the jacket spade cuz I, at this point, I'm like, okay, this guy beats me. I would just wanna fold.
We got a flush draw there. I got this offer. I think we're supposed to call.
Would you rather have jacket diamonds? Like I feel like a jacket spades just blocks a lot of bluffs.
No, cuz we're
No, it's our backup.
Deep and so we need, yeah, exactly. We need, you know, to be able to river some strong hands and like rivering a flush is pretty, pretty great.
Okay. Right.
We should have just sized up and then he's not raising us.
Oh, yeah, we could have lost more money faster damage.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, you gotta call.
All in fifty-two percent. I don't play like this. Sorry, guys.
It's cuz, it's cuz the jacket spades that you identified, I think. We have a bad hand to call and like call down, so we just return it back into a bluff.
In real life, we're crushed. Like, but I think in, in, it'll be interesting to look in the solver. If we can get him off a weak kick. Like we get him off a tragic game.
We can't even call. What the hell?
Yeah, sure. Just click it.
Mm-hmm. What do we do then? Do there? I, I was raising.
You're not raising in that.
Ever good.
There was no calls to shut out pay? Yeah, no, six percent.
Yeah, six percent. The range is out, man. We're supposed to do something else here.
You look with uh, what is raised with probably maybe ten jack. Maybe his fire or something with a backdoor.
I don't think raising here against a check raise is gonna be a, a big thing.
I will bust ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of all the time.
People here are gonna under check raise you, you know?
That's where you gotta deviate from what we train with.
Don't try this at home.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Not put too much time in this line cuz I think, I don't think we're making a lot of money.
Alright, but. Can we just look at the queen jacks after this?
You wanna see the, the, the. What? This no here?
Cuz it's hard to know what's based on our particular combo and what is actually like. Our whole strategy.
Cause I was folding, man.
Yeah, it's just the jack of spades.
My jacket spade was like, I wanna call or I wanna continue, but do I, do I go all in?
I'm curious about that node. If we um, if we do stuff it on him, what, what if we go to fold? I bet we can make some pretty big folds cuz like it's a really strong line.
Yeah, we do. It's like the bluff that goes with aces.
Can we also after this, look at the overall seed bet strategy?
Yep, we're getting him off kings, king ten, king nine. Ace queen. Pretty stone cold.
And no one is ever gonna call the queen here, right?
And we block. It's interesting seeing that he has a lot of pink queen and queens and we block both those. So it makes sense as a bluff, I think. It's crazy, but it kinda makes some sense.
And then see best strategy for out of position or in position?
Yeah, for us.
And it's a merge jamming queen, uh, queen X cuz you still get called by spades.
Okay, so it is mainly just quarter pot.
And then, yeah, small. And then there's some sizing, yeah, with.
This is ace king and queen.
Oh, yeah.
Back to pre flop, fold.
Yeah, exactly. I like the line the best, okay.
Her bigs.
You checked to us before.
Better than that. Do now.
Now we're out.
Are we?
Yeah, we're just out.
The reason we were calling was the equity of the spade. So. Now we're not gonna realize that equity. It's time to fold.
We're not. That's the thing, right? It's that thing it does when we start to pay and then like we're. Oh, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Milky, Milky. Wow.
I mean. That's a rough one, right?
All in, right?
If I'm that right, I'm gonna jam it.
Wait, there's no other choice but all in surely.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think all in is a bit spicy. You wanna do that? Okay.
Do you wanna fold? I don't know.
I mean, this guy here, we, he's under the gun and in my mind, we never beat him, right?
He misses flush draw.
But, but now you know what? Maybe you can wrap something. So I guess it's time to torch a hundred bigs. Woo, oh, my goodness. Yeah.
We found it.
Oh, shocking. What a great. That's really like, that's really like, gonna look good on my database.
And that's why you followed queen jack.
Well, we're not here for folding.
Yeah, then Louis are gonna be showing that one to us on the punt filter, right? How, how did I lose eighty big blinds in this hand?
What happened, guys?
We're like, you're a child of the sin. It's perfect.
Okay, so probably just like all right. But say, say you ate your cereals that day and you're like, yeah.
I think this one does. Yeah, I think this squeaks in some through betting, right?
I really, I really wanna go after it.
All that block is gonna three bets.
I think this one, it's like preferred overnight for the, the famous ace king reason.
Okay, calls, whoo. Okay, okay, so. How do we proceed?
I think we, yeah, need to bet this something.
Damn.
Thank you.
Four or nine.
So, okay, we have a. I think this board you wanna bet like off bot, but since our hand is weak, we wanna size down.
I think it's gonna make both options.
Yeah, I think both options are pretty fine.
Okay.
Sober agrees. Oh, my God.
Okay, no, no, it's fine. We have top pair now.
How'd it go last time? Did it go fine? Did it go fine last time?
It's fine. Well, he's not flat calling jacks, queens. What does it, what is it gonna be? Ace ten?
Wait, he's not, he's not fighting jacks. He's definitely fighting jacks, isn't he?
Well, if I was him, I would play jacks, green slap, no?
First three bet, it's a call.
But he's not you.
He does, he has actually, I think, a lot of jacks. I think he has a fair bit of queens too.
You can, yeah, when you're, when you're in early position and you get raised, you can flat jacks and queens deep.
I feel like this part of our range is just gonna stuff it here.
Okay.
Oh. Oh. Feels bad.
Or click back.
Stuffing is.
Like it's better to call with like ten eight, ten eighth and jacks, I think. You guys were blocking top set. Maybe not cuz. He's gonna check raising jacks at high frequency versus small bet.
I don't know, man. I think I will, like, we have a lot of good hands here. I think this is basically the bottom. I thought we can call.
Well, it's at the bottom cuz we have like unpaired stuff. Like we have junk, you know? Uh, but like he's just checking us. He's checking.
The sand.
Well, I don't know, man.
I don't know. Ace king off with a spade almost like has more opportunities to improve by river.
Here's my reasoning for thinking we raise back. We have a vulnerable top pair that unblocks both backdoors and we, our kicker is not an overcard.
I hate raising.
And if you get, we get stuffed with them.
Alright, Danny, you wanna go over range or red?
I might be getting the heuristic wrong, but I feel like if we have raised backs, this might be one of them. But it does kind of uh. Alright, that's just wrong. I mean, we're, we're just like losing all the chips against a better ten, so could be just silly.
Or jacks or queens.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all a spot.
Maybe if we're shorter to begin with, it's the kind of hand that does it. Maybe we're too.
Yeah.
Bold. I was gonna say, this is the kind of thing where we get to save ourselves some money.
Both.
Yeah. Um, I don't know.
This sizing is so small. It sucks.
Also, like, we don't have to lose all our money against jacks. Like if an ace, you know, turns, then like jacks can slow down and then we can end up like not going broke.
Also, it could be a nate on the river.
Yeah, right. Exactly. But I think we should, I think we should fold. I think we have no real way to prove.
I think you have to go.
I was gonna say, I think it's mixing.
Yeah.
In which case we should fold.
We were already behind his value. Some of his bluffs got there.
Oh.
Other bluffs still have a lot of outs.
Full CV call. Now we're calling a minus CV.
This is shocking. He just says queens. Okay, ace, maybe we win this one. So we're gonna three bet.
I bet you we do this one.
Yeah, we're gonna destroy this.
No, he folds free.
So, oh, my goodness. Look at, boy, you must be so happy right now. What did, what does he have? Six, seven, a spade or like bucket nines? He's like fist bumping here. Is this?
He definitely has pocket nines. He's in, going almost in the chat. I don't know about blasted, but I like half pot. Maybe even.
How often do you guys think we're checking this hand?
Never.
Ever.
Not really.
I think it's like forty percent of the time check.
If it was like a.
More with the spade or check more without the spade?
More than.
Seven, I'm with you, Nick. That's more is still too disconnected.
Yeah, Nick, that's what I thought when I looked at this. I was like, okay, maybe check with the spade. Um. Unblocking double by backdoors. I think you tend to go pretty, you go a little faster.
We can't check because we wanna stack his queens and jacks.
Yeah, that's unchecked stuff, so.
But yeah, uh, how often are we checking with the spade in our hand, Louis?
Check more with the spade. I'm, I'm black. I wanna put more chips in the box with the spade. Am I wrong?
And you can even start to lean it. It's like mixing and type bigger sizing. So it's, that's close.
The lower the overpair, the more you check.
He's not taking anything.
Could be the opposite.
Faith is bad sizing.
Opposite in a single raise pot, Scotty.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it kind of works. Both ways? Cuz I think what happens is you end up, um, it's like a board coverage thing. Cuz you, a lot of your bluffs are like queen ten, so you have coverage when those cards roll off. But like if it's lower, you'll see like a gap. Like if it's like six, seven deuce, then you're bluffing with sort of like ten, nine, eight stuff. You're betting like.
What I meant was like. You're, the lower your overpair is compared to the board. The more you will check in three bet pots because in a single raise pot, if we like raise button in the big blind calls, they don't have jacks and queens anyway. So we can check with tens. Sorry, we can check with aces and bet tens cuz they're the same hand, but tens needs more protection. But in this case, they actually do have a fair amount of like queens and jackson range. So we wanna maximize value against those by betting aces and kings more and checking. With like.
Well, it's just, it's just a range bet spot. Like if you had checks, I think aces would be a check. Um, but we're just betting everything. We have so much connectivity. If you change the board to like a seven high or a six high, I think aces will check very frequently.
Yeah, we should look.
I'm, I pulled it up right now and um, it actually holds on seven, six deuce two tone. Well, not quite. Aces checks a little bit more. Kings bets the most. Which makes sense cuz kind of like with what you're saying, Danny, that beats all of his like slow played pairs. Kings, you know, does get the value out of queens and jacks and tens.
But if like nines, are we checking a fair amount?
Uh, more, yeah, more. And you're right, it goes all the way down the tree there um, on seven, six deuce two tone from kings is the highest. All the way down to eights. Yep, you're, you're spot on.
Uh. Mix this up too.
I wanna blast this turn.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Uh, yeah, yeah, you wanna, you wanna keep the pedal on.
Alright. Oh, did he fold? What happened? We didn't get his hundred big blinds. Oh.
Open enter two overs, it's not.
Okay, so today we ate our cereals.
It's just like a ninety percent, all ten percent true bet?
Yes.
Yeah, isn't queen eight the more of a true bet here?
Yes. You know, majority call, but. We don't trust under the gun. We calls, we get a nacei board.
Yikes. We have just nothing on nothing here, like.
So here, the line two says the most checked flops have a flush draw and two or three. It looks a lot like this.
And with a hand that's just absolute trash.
Are we gonna check?
Uh, no.
No, we gotta.
I'm checking.
I've been twenty five percent.
Mixing ten and twenty five percent.
Uh, mixing check in twenty five percent.
Yeah, fifty fifty probably.
Yeah, I'm fine with just.
Yeah, if this is right, then we wanted to check. And then, oh, yeah, but then small checking, we figure it out. Okay. Not great. All right.
Was he value betting us with pocket sevens?
He didn't.
He didn't know. It was a merge.
Betting to see where he's at.
Don't raise it. Don't do it. No, Louis, no.
Tell you what, Scotty, okay? I'm okay with folding here.
Yeah, I think it's just a fold.
Today I had my cereals. Right?
In that case, if you had your cereal.
I have my cigarette cereals and I don't trust this guy. I have to try him. I know he never folds free flop for the, ever, right? But there's, there's some trying in me today.
There's not, there's not even ten percent trying.
Not even ten percent trying.
Call is better.
Yes, yes, cereals won every ten days, so.
How, how, how good was that cereal this morning? You got a five bet in you?
Gonna push him?
I do not have what it takes.
I don't have a five bet.
This is such.
Nah, uh, just followed. We lost eight big blinds, okay?
Up on the cereals.
How did it take us that long?
Not even point one percent.
We got a through.
He was bluffing us with a better hand.
All right. So this is easy, right? Just call. But.
Rebetting like thirty percent?
Yeah.
Nick. It's thirty four.
Okay, he just calls. We get a good flop. This could be going our way.
So I'm sizing up with the spade in my hand.
Yeah, it feels like a large bet, right? Very kind of a connected board.
Hmm, yeah.
And so one of our best kings, you got ace, king, king, queen, so.
I, I think we're on seventy five percent or half, but mostly seventy five.
Yeah, but with the spade, we can bet a little bit less, I think, but I'm fine, fine with sizing.
But it just feels like fifty, okay, twenty five as well.
This hand is gonna be one of our hands. It's gonna be very resilient against the check raise. With the backdoor spade, backdoor straight and top pair.
But it's the same, right? It doesn't change whatever we have spade or not. It's just.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good hand. I see like the hands where it would be a mistake to go big, but queens, it's pretty bad to go big. Makes sense.
Right, so it's, uh, that's. Let's look at this again. It is the, are we not supposed to size up a lot? Twenty five percent only. Okay, so not that much sizing out. It's just a small one.
Seems weird because the board is, the board is both two-tone and wet.
Well, it doesn't matter because usually when you arrange that, you bet smaller.
Okay, that's why we're doing it. Let's continue.
I'm not going smaller than seventy five now. I wanna set up a little less than pot sized jam, at least give them the impression I wanna get all the chips in, whether I do or not's another story.
So I think the king is the best spot given with a three bet pot. Right? He doesn't have ace king, doesn't have kings, we have both. And then, so that means our pair is probably very clean. There's flush draws, got a good one. I wanna go mucho grande.
How big?
Well, seventy five percent or a hundred percent.
Yeah, like seventy five.
Are we going broke if we put a hundred in? Like, are we go, are we gonna jam?
Yes, yes, S P R is too, would have a great top pair. He's not well covered in king X. This is great. Until he shows me the pocket tens or ace king, this is amazing.
I go seventy five, but I can see five.
Spot it. Oh.
So much.
Even go smaller.
But yeah, it's actually fifty per.
Fifty percent.
In game, I would go twenty, so I'm glad we're doing this cuz I wanna see.
Now we're just.
Now we're just jamming anyway.
Just a dream ripper.
Rigged.
We're a loser.
Yes.
He's tough to beat, man. I don't know. He never folds. We either chop against him or who knows what, right? So, okay, got the church. And the church is open today.
Let's go.
Church is open.
Vamos, vamos.
Hallelujah. And then vamos to the flop, vamos. Oh.
Vamos to the player.
Oh, look at this.
How often are we calling?
I think a bit.
You get nothing worse to fold with this.
The church is open. This is Satan.
I think we, I know we like to see all five cards cuz like. We can get it in here against like queens and bink the ace on the river and we'll get, we won't be able to see the river if we, if we just call.
Aren't we like a sixty forty dog to queens?
You can call and jam a. This is like a pure clickback, right?
No, this is a jam.
To be honest, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure I really have the click back in.
I looked at tens versus ace king.
Sliver warrior.
It was fifty seven, but it was ace king wolf.
Vamos.
Vamos, vamos.
What are we supposed to click with then?
I don't think we have a click range.
Nothing.
More than thirty three percent of our.
Versus four bet, yeah.
I've been playing too much I C M.
Come on, Danny, you had one.
That's what I, uh, sorry.
We saw this one before, um, call fifty, three bet fifty.
Yeah, so now we know why this mixes costs cuz this doesn't love a four, uh, five bet jam, right? As much as the king, ace, king suited those.
Exactly, yeah. It's like the couple percent of equity really matters. It goes from being thin to being kind of bad. But like if small blind squeezes behind us with something worse, then, then we can maybe backjam or.
Uh, by the way, Louis.
Yeah.
That's the third note you have, if the, if we got a really low board that is paired with a flush draw, um. I think there were actually more big betting if there was a rainbow and no pair. Um, like seven, five deuce rainbow, stuff like that. We'll see, we'll see if we get there, but I think that's how I remember it at least.
So these. Like flush draw, flush draw, flush draw, rainbow, rainbow, flush draw.
Oh, is this, is this the aggregator? So this is the most big bets, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And flush draw, flush draw, flush draw.
Yeah, fair enough, okay.
Low paired with a flush draw or low rainbow? You bet big.
You have a better way to describe these, let me know.
Yeah, I'm low paired with the flush draw or low rainbow.
Low connected.
Low connected rainbow, right?
Are they connected? Six, four, two? I mean, it's not really connected.
Well, we do have the meddling portion of our range. We three bet.
No, no one has any straights on those boards. Like on eight, seven, four rainbow, no one has five, six.
This is also probably specific to under the gun, right? Cuz.
What in my absolute words of five, six?
He really has none of that, right?
You're supposed to be three betting your suited connectors versus under the gun.
I don't think you three bet five, six, though. I think it's too far down.
Yeah.
Might be one pit down or it might be like ten percent.
That might be the last one.
Depends how spicy you wanna be. I feel like this is a big bet for some reason. I don't know if this hand wants to do it, but this board feels like a. Board that wants to put chips in, make portions of the range.
Just bet small, no? You get called by worst ace. Life is good. This is a range bet board, so we just bet small.
Okay.
There's plenty of sizing there.
Yeah, I figured portions of your range definitely gonna connect pretty well. Just gonna wanna start putting a lot of chips in.
Yay.
So. Today we had our cereals.
It's a more, it's a call more than a raise. There are raises, but this calls more.
For sure, but when you have cereals, you don't go.
Twenty percent three.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that you know what cereal is.
It means something different for Louis.
Hey, that was fun.
So. Yeah, you're right, sorry.
Can we call?
No.
Bottom of the defense range.
Yay, I'm not a puncher. Come on, go back and change your action, you little nit.
Call him a little bitch.
I called him a little nit. We're being recorded. Come on, I wouldn't do that.
Raise it.
Let's cover your.
I raised Scotty, but I didn't have my cereals.
That's a pure call, right?
It's got some calls, but it's gotta have her. It's gotta have.
So let's try, let's try it.
Ten percent.
Hey, let's go for the, uh, twenty five percent three bet.
Four bet.
Uh, today.
Every time. Okay.
I love that. Was it a bit big?
Quarter or half?
No, no. Mixing this one or this one? We're value, we're up in value. We're gonna pick this one. Okay.
I'm checking.
Checking, be ambitious. I don't know why we would check here.
Might get in the store bluffing, I guess.
Protect the, the best hand we checked protects our checking range.
Look.
And that. Eight, six, five. Maybe we just have a lot of checks here. Cuz it doesn't connect with our high cards at all.
Your, your oversee betting your pairs, I bet I'll pay a hundred percent there. Pure, you're probably pure see betting kings, queens, jacks, tens, nines. All the aces.
Louis in shock. Hello? Are you silent? Or is, am I lagged out?
I see, see betting too much.
Man, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised.
Why?
There he is. I mean, they have fives and sixes and we don't.
But also they just have like a lot of like medium strength aces and like piling against those hands with jacks is like minus C V.
Yeah, who has more top pairs here?
Hmm.
Yeah, look at him. He's full, like full ace queen suited, full ace jack suited, full ace ten, like all the way down.
So if we look at summary, no. A breakdown?
Yeah, that's one.
Top pair. Thirty one percent of range.
We left a right.
And then.
Oh, that's us.
It's, it's, it's not comparing us. I want the one, is it a report that compares the two players?
She has top pair and less often than us.
Right.
We have some of the options you don't have.
And when we have, and he doesn't have the best top pairs, only we do.
Yeah.
But I guess that kind of makes sense. Like, so then if he has a lot of strong hands, we're gonna polarize around a strong range. We're not gonna like range bet a bunch of. Shitty hands against a lot of medium strength top pairs, like.
So interestingly enough, like I wouldn't mind seeing what they do term when we check with their aces cuz I'll contend that they're gonna check, uh, a lot of their weaker ones. Where when your racist population, they're just gonna start blasting. Any ace they have.
Well, are you saying, uh, if we check back?
No, but I could see that it's fine. Like, I, I, I can understand why cuz like when you're like. The recs will like to start blasting as soon as you show some weaknesses, when they start feel, feeling comfortable because they're never gonna check an ace there. So when you check, in a lot of their minds, we don't ever have an ace.
Louis, go to the ranges tab.
They feel super comfortable betting.
And then on equity buckets, simple in the middle of the, yeah, click hands.
Yeah, yeah, this is great.
And then you can, if you hover over, it'll show. Yeah. And yeah, that's a good point, Ken. It'll often induce from. Random stuff or like cause them to overvalue.
Yeah, and even. Yeah, look at that. Buttons, yeah, I mean, ahead fifty three to forty six, but that's not huge, especially for through bad, but. Whereas like buttons way more ahead on a king high flop, right? I'll look it up.
Okay. So really, the whole portion of the deck is the small pairs. It's like all the pocket pairs, right? That's not.
And the trash.
All right.
Funny, we have more pure trash than him.
So we can check or see that. Whichever you like.
This is, this is the solver who doesn't. Now, now we.
Think he puts a three.
And now we have to bet something.
Louis.
You gotta go at least half five here, right?
How is that different than the flop?
Well, he's only got, I, I honestly, I don't know.
He didn't, he didn't back the turn. That's what's different.
Like a good, the solver's gonna check back some ace X, still, we can start getting value from them. There's still flush rolls, they're gonna call.
But now we get two streets from, from ace eight suited, right?
Queens, jacks, tens.
Fucking eights.
Can I report back? I looked up the similar spot with, uh, with king, seven, six, two tone instead of ace, six, five. And here on the ace high one, um, imposition has fifty three percent equity on the king high board. Inposition has fifty six percent equity. Seems small, but I think it's really big. And, um, here, top pairs were kind of similar. And on king high, out of position has ten percent top pairs and in position has twenty one percent top pairs.
So.
So.
Someone brought up getting like.
Pretty blastie. Pretty blastie, yeah.
Someone brought up two streets now, so like if they have like pocket jacks or tens here, we're not gonna get three streets anyway, but when we check flop, we might get two good streets of value.
Certainly one easily, especially with this, with the spade on the turns a little bit.
Gonna get one either way.
Yeah.
Oh.
That was disappointing.
He called a three bet, king queen offsuit.
Sovere's fish.
That's bad, what?
That's bad, what?
No, Louis, no for.
Scotty, say, say you need your cereals here.
Is this even a thing?
Is this a folder?
I think it's a pure call.
I thought we like mainly it's like ace, three, day six is like the main three betting range here. Is that right?
Yep, my worst suited ace, so he opens ace three suited. I think this is probably fine.
It's next to five percent three bet. Liver warriors. Liver warriors.
We're trying to play both flop.
No fold, zero fold.
Let's do something different.
What's the spot where we fold? We just don't open it. UTG.
Not even a sliver, not.
Not, not even with cereals.
Yeah, Danny, I think UTG nine, you can let it go, but like all the way by UTG eight or seven, I think you're starting to, starting to raise it.
And if we're shorter, are we like folding to an open as well?
Yeah, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, shorter you can, yeah, it's shorter. You can let it go like forty big lines probably.
Yeah, or an ICM, you can start three betting at some, I think.
Yeah.
Ace three suited, three bet, right? This is it?
Is mainly a three bet.
Would you like to see bet your pair?
We're not see bet. We didn't, we didn't.
Would you like to bet your pair?
Would you like to float bet? It's fine.
Core, a lot of his aces.
Yeah, we're deep and we have backdoors and.
We got the best ace two hearts, ace two of clubs.
I would rather bet ace two deuce of hearts at SBR ten.
I'd rather, I'd rather bet ace two of hearts here, so I'm betting small.
Yeah, I think it's different at like SBR of like four, when it's three bet pot, but SBR ten, we wanna start.
He's not gonna let us score the batteries.
That's three bet, thirty-five percent of the five.
No?
Isn't it just like a six, seven, eight that do?
It's the same.
It's like four up to ten. Actually, I'm surprised that eight, ten suited is three betting so much here.
Ace four is like aces. Because you see the four as like the shape of an ace.
Yep.
That's all, that's all the solver picks it. The four as a.
There was a lady playing on Hustler Casino and she like four bet jammed ace four and then she's like, oh, I thought I had aces.
Yeah, exactly.
Make case, man, against me every time.
And you crack kings and you're like, sorry, man.
Bold.
I thought I was dealt ace of clubs, ace of clubs.
Two to aces, yay. Alright, well.
Pulled, right?
This is never a full.
It's gotta have a sliver of folding.
Okay, I thought it, I thought we like started V P being a hundred percent of ace jacko.
I think this is the indifferent one. You can do any of three.
It's not indifferent. It's a massive IVV three bet.
Look at that, there, look at that fold.
Hamburger, baby.
Look at the hamburger.
Give me that with some fold. And fold.
Kick it up.
This guy's too good.
Yeah.
Poker is fun.
Oh my God, he had aces.
Solved you.
So much.
Had aces. Two to aces.
Alright guys, do we roll? Oh, we rolled higher. No, we rolled ninety-seven. We can't flat.
There's no flat thing, man.
There's some flattening.
Flattening, it's a majority flat, but today we had cereals.
Today we rolled ninety-seven.
Okay.
This is a board that we blast pretty hard.
Yeah, it's not a bit small because it's bare.
Hmm, I think paired deuces, these more bigger betting, yeah.
We're too deep, not about half pot. Hey, that works.
It's a thing, paired deuces. It's, um, yeah, you often see really big betting. No, oh my God.
Same?
Yeah, same. Just, just geo it in.
Probably got him, yeah, he's probably got a medium pocket pair.
I.
All of it.
It's close. I think you're probably supposed to jam, but.
This is a fifth month, no? You got the EV.
I mean, it's point, point nine bigs over checking.
Yeah, but it's tough to get fifteen EV, right?
Wait, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Oh, but checking is high EV too. It's not that, yeah.
Oh, he called us with fives.
Cool. Alright, we got value.
That doesn't happen in the wild.
No, yeah, you're not, you're not getting somebody to call down three streets of fives.
We're getting that second street though.
Well, this is a great call. Not today.
I didn't realize that went through that so much. I think I'm more polar here. Like hundred percent fighting king jack and then raising lower ones more.
Just check.
Yeah.
Oh, I refuse.
Uh, we just, we should.
Scotty, how often do you think your range is checking here?
A lot.
On a monotone board? And then when it bets, we bet small.
I will read from the bottom of the screen right now. The most checked flops, dot, 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 high monotone boards.
Oh, it looks like that, but there, there's two broadways here. I'm not worried about this one.
It's even worse when there's two, then you can't have the king high flush either. We have like no flushes in range. What the hell? Alright.
Oh boy, was I wrong.
A range bet.
What the hell?
And then what makes this a sideboard different than the ones we saw in the report? Let's go back to.
Cause it's monotone.
But this is a low one. Low one. Low one. Low one.
So it's not a mono board thing. It's an ace low, low board thing.
It's a nice low, low monotone, right?
I mean, the mono or not, they're all up there. It's the two tone ones too.
We have a lot of red for a monotone board.
Yeah, no ten percenting. I guess, cause ace king hits us.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't know. Like we have no flushes, but we also have no air. We have some flushes. We have like queen nine.
Truly ace low, low, flush draw, I'm all. I'll check them out.
Yeah.
When we have a queen, it is a flush.
Ace high low, so we just range bet.
Good to know. Fifty, fifty?
This is my, my calling range. Like I have a square with like king, queen suited, like king, jack suited and this one, but.
We're at a hundred, so they're all gonna have a frequency though.
I know, I know.
Maybe like thirty percent. And if he, uh, forbets, we jam it? No, I don't know.
Never.
What do we do to a forbid, actually?
We call. Well, I'm bored.
And we flop a queen and we lose.
Pretty great, right? So rainbow. That's small.
At half, right? Lot of gutters, lot of. Well, not that much that interacts with this range.
I think we need to size up because we wrap around the ten. Jack ten, queen ten. Pocket queens, pocket jacks, wanna size up. So wanna size up?
I don't like to bet against Peter, but I think it's half pot here.
I can see it, yeah. It's the double gut shot, right?
Yeah, and also just like the ten high nature, we're gonna have some other stuff that wants to charge ten X and jacks and queens like.
If I think like, I think like ten, seven deuce would be different, cause then the like the bottom straight doesn't exist.
Wow.
That's ugly. Let's call.
Ah, yeah, we just call. We just have a lot of hand. We have a lot of clean outs.
Yeah, let's just call and win.
I actually had a very similar spots to this where a guy dunked in a spot where I thought it was a weird dunk yesterday and I just had a lot of outs. I was like, well, I call, let's see a river.
And then normally they jam the river and you don't have to worry about what to do here. Now we have to worry about.
This is kind of bottom of range. We bet flop fifty percent, then we called on turn. Like what worst hand do we get here with? Name a worse hand.
I kinda.
Eight, nine.
I agree with you.
Right? Like eight, nine, although we don't really have a lot of.
No.
Range, I don't think.
Jack, nine, jack of spades, nine, jack of spades.
Yep.
Which is.
We have some other, and like, we have some like, I think we have queen in spades. It's. This might be the one.
You can check here. It's fine. You can give up if you don't have what it takes.
I think you can.
But we had our cereals.
And we have our cereal, so. Are you like? In theme like, uh, fruit loops here?
Well, it's like, also he can like, does he ever dunk turn with a high, low? King of spades combo? No, cause he has a call flop with that.
Yeah, I'm definitely curious to see that range after we decide on our move here. It's tough to strategize when you don't know what the hell he's holding. But I, I kind of agree that like we got here with one of the worst things we can get here with.
It's really notable. We just like have a lot of one pair hands that have showdown value and can eat like random buffs.
Do the spades matter? I guess that's the question.
A little bit, but he's just not calling that much spades. Like if he's calling spades on flop, he's calling a lot of ace high spades. He has a miniscule amount of like seven X of spades, but I don't think that bluffs turn. I don't think he has spades at it. So I don't think we're blocking that much important. Really?
Are we gonna get a medium ace to fold for sixty-seven? There's only one, one way to find out.
Only one way to find out. Click the eggplant.
Not for thirty-nine. Gotta go eggplant if you're going. Or just lose.
Alright, half pot is, half pot is good.
The, not the worst EV.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not crazy, but half pot, I was thinking about that. I was like, could we get him?
Oh.
Alright, we needed to get into this one.
Negative sign there too.
Let's move on.
What does he, what is he dunking turn with? And what, what should we be bluffing?
We played it perfectly. I regret nothing.
Yeah, right? We had, we had all the outs. We called with a good price. We didn't hit any of them.
Then we jammed and he folded a five.
So that's his turn Lee. You wanna see that?
Kind of weird. So he's got like ace, queen, ace, jack, nine, eight.
Two open enders plus ace, queen and some two pair.
It's the weirdest turn he, right? But it's just cause he calls so many aces and then we three bet some, some bluffs, right? So our bluffs are like, yeah.
And we just don't raise here.
So take a look. Would he have folded that five for the smaller bet?
But this is so weird. We just don't raise against a like third pot, the, I guess it's closer to half pot. Okay.
What else do we wanna see about this one?
On the river.
River, yeah, river.
Perfectly by jamming. And got the, and got a better hand to fold. Would they have folded to the half pot?
When, and what's our strategy on this river generally?
So what's a better hand that is folding here? Cause uh, this is nine, seven and six, five?
Six, five, six, five folded.
Okay.
Uh, can we look at our, all our river strategy? Button on the river?
This is a silly spot though. Our opponents are not gonna donk the turn.
Yeah, that's right. I agree. Let's move on.
I regret nothing.
Alright.
Scotty.
It mixes calls and raises and today we roll a sixty-nine, so we raise.
No.
Nope, only calls. Okay.
Yeah, it's king, queen, suit.
Okay.
It's the island.
Uh, wanna raise or I wanna call? What kind of hands are you gonna raise here? Jack, ten, a spade? More than king, queen. Yeah. Okay. So king, queen, the flush can come, the straight can come. Probably just wanna power control. Am I wrong?
I like it. I like the call.
Now that the queen came in, I don't wanna go mucho grande.
Yeah, you can be polar here. You could go fourteen.
Okay, probably more like, uh, fifty-five or small.
Yeah, we can't get it all in, but we can.
I think after going small and turn, we can polarize on river, especially with like spades missing. The fact that Jack ten came in, it's kind of sucks, but I might see, nah, probably can't over that on a paired, paired river.
We're missing a size here, something in middle, right?
Yeah, I could just like go. But I'm gonna pick eighty out of these sizes. Yep.
Think bot size would be better, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I think on, on a paired board, I just don't think you have the hyper polarization on river like you do on a, like a board without a pair. And I think it's a point against the big size that a straight came in, but it's a point for it that the flush missed. So we have. Yeah, you, plenty, plenty of buffs to. From the pushes.
Are we value betting a nine on the river there?
Maybe. Although I don't know, there've been a lot of action. Like we'd already bet multiple streets.
Maybe like ace nine only.
You can, I think you could block. If the tongue goes check, check. Otherwise, no. Uh, this one I wanna treat that, right?
So majority. Calls a lot. I know it calls a lot.
Majority ball, like king, queen suited here, but we had cereals today.
Okay.
Call.
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 Yeah, it sucks. That's a call. Doesn't even suck that much with your big ones.
Oh, well. Let's go broke. Let's go broke. Of calling broke rather than raising.
Oh my God.
You actually can, yeah.
Oh my God.
Yeah, not surprised. We can raise with all the draws. It's our best days, pretty much.
Yeah, not surprised we can raise with all the draws. It's our best days, pretty much all the time.
This is a four bet pot that we're never folding. So it wants to, before the board, before the board gets worse for us, it wants to put it in.
Yep.
Like now the board got worse. Right? Marginally.
It's not too bad.
Yeah, I feel like that.
It's like interesting. It's cuz he could have some combo draws and stuff here that we can squeak out a little value from, right?
Ten percent.
Eight will have thirty.
We need to be cautious now.
If we go twenty five percent, we only have a third behind, which is probably fine, never.
Which is probably fine, yeah.
How do we get more chips out of kings? That's what I'm thinking.
I'm like focused more on like. King, jack suited. Like, I think that's a pretty nice hand to try and get money from.
Ten percent.
Ball in there.
Mostly bigger, but yeah, ten percent really. I mean, they're gonna call their draws with either sides, I suppose so.
Ah, what a clown river.
They may even fold. King, jack for.
No, 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 Louis.
You can't check back.
I think you can.
The flush?
What's, what's calling you?
Ace, jack, ace nine, ace seven.
Three, six, I don't think he called an ace. Those, very few of those hands four bet.
I used to jam all the time here, but.
Oh, they four bet us.
Yeah, they four bet.
Now we have to realize the board pair, the flush came in, we have for the.
We got a lot of value. We're expecting to win a fair amount. It's not cuz I'm like convinced we're beat all the time, but I just not convinced we get a lot of value.
I mean, it's only a third of a pot. I I can't help myself. I gotta.
Yeah, but we were trying to get value from on the turn, can no longer call, right?
This bet is not.
Yeah, it either, it either, it either outdrew us or it's now even more worried about like.
Yeah, we already won fifty big blinds or lost fifty big blinds. It's fine. Fine as it is, you don't need to. It's as bad as it gets. The board pair, the flush came in.
Especially, I know this is chippy V, but in ICM like it'd be so much nicer to keep your last thirty bigs than punt it off here.
Jamming is still making six thousand big blinds per hundred.
Yeah, but. The more like deeper you are in a tournament, the more this shrinks her.
But the difference between the two.
Yeah, but Louis, you wanted to go broke with ace queen and the.
Not even if you're deep. I think, I think if you're just. I think if you're just like seventy five percent of the field, I think you're like, have a strong preference to just have thirty one bigs to fight another day if you run into it. Like he doesn't have to be deep for the ICM to matter.
Ah.
Yeah.
Nah, he's not folding.
He's a punter.
Three bets left.
Three.
Hmm.
Okay, by a lot, I meant forty five percent.
I thought queen nine.
Pair forward.
I wanna bet.
Deep, twenty five percent seems fine, deep stack.
Well, we're very deep and the flush drew us, so I think we bet off pot.
In position, although we have to size up that much. He's got plenty of ten action range.
It's very deep, Ken.
Our, our three bet targeted his offsuit tens, so he shouldn't have any offsuit tens other than ace ten at some frequency. But he's gonna have a lot of suited tens.
Bet.
Let's go broke in the order of.
Oh, don't, don't think you go that big. You don't have to.
You could.
I like check too.
Necessary.
I don't like check.
Sexy check.
Rip it.
Jam.
Four E four?
Jam.
Oh, look at this.
PG.
We got him. Look at this.
With the nines.
Pick him up. Pick him apart.
Come on, you know you're gonna do it.
You bet.
Well. This is like a pair of aces, right?
Yeah, this one probably does what, three percent? Well, maybe twenty?
One every five times. Uh.
I'm folding.
You gonna solve him again?
It's not the craziest thing I've ever seen, but uh.
We're gonna solve him.
Are you gonna jam?
Are you allowed to just call here?
Yeah, probably mixing call and jam, right?
I'm folding, but I think he'll jam.
I think it jams a lot. No, clicking seems pretty bad.
No, we saw before, we don't get to click here.
So we just call?
Jam a little. Call, call a little fair bit.
What do you do with eight, seven?
Half the time.
Fold.
Fold, yeah. The only, the only low ones that I'm calling would be five and four. Those are the only candidates for calling.
Ace nine.
Never jamming.
Fold.
I'm folding this cuz no one four back bluffs in real life, so what there's.
Call is safe. Let's, let's probably call.
It ain't safe.
Do we call him with aces?
There is a click. What the fuck? Why were we not clicking ace, king suited if we're allowed to click?
I mean, it's five percent, so like.
We use this instead with aces.
If you king the card a little bit here, it almost looks like an ace. No? Yeah.
If you hold your mouse in just the right spot.
I, yeah.
This is why you call it.
Yeah, my lemon ding dong.
How often you gonna get this flop?
Every time.
One in how many thousands?
Yeah.
One thousand three hundred twenty six. How about that?
Place, if you're playing against me, you're gonna get.
Against Gary, it comes every, every flop.
That's right, seventy percent.
Sometimes call, sometimes raise the thirty three.
There's no raising here.
How many unique flops are there? Twenty three thousand, something like that?
We just played a four bet pot where we raised flop.
Raise it up.
It was a six percent.
Not much.
How many unique flops are there? Why don't I know this? We should know this, right?
Uh, is it one thousand? No, see, it's one thousand three hundred twenty six.
Okay.
I think.
That's how many hands there are, hand combinations.
Hmm, no.
Nineteen thousand six hundred.
There you go. Yeah, I knew it. I thought it was somewhere around forty thousand. I said twenty three.
Yeah, but if you simplify a little bit, it comes down to one thousand three hundred twenty six.
Okay, when he has an ace, it's a big ace and we get all, and and he calls us here for the jam. When he has pocket kings and pocket queens, do we get any, is there any way to get any more money? And we unblock both of the spade draws.
I think it's.
Spade draws and if the spade draws fold, we don't mind. We, we're happy to go all in against, against, against I, any draw.
It could be quarter pot. Might be half pot.
Pot and douche more raises?
I think it's small.
I don't know.
Double flush draw board?
I mean, I'm clicking half pot every time. I don't know.
What do we want to bet small here with?
We have a ton of bluffs.
I think uh. This is a very bad turn for, for both of us, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it's that relevant, honestly, but I think um, there's this thing where. In position, when he misses a seat bet, he's not that capped cuz he always has some like protected hands in there. He always has some check raises. So we don't really just get a blast the moment he checks back one or checks one time. So you often see that like first bet is like small, medium. Like I would love thirty three here.
So what, like I, I, yeah, I like fifty percent. So if I have like, if you have like king five suited, king six suited. Like king, I mean, that's, we have king six suited, right? So that's probably gonna wanna go big. I can't think of really a lot of draws except flushes.
I think fifty percent is really good, although it's probably.
I just think it's too much. Ah, it's all fine.
Yeah, I, I think if we could choose a thirty three size, it probably would be well represented there, Tim.
And it's, and it's all kind of the same, really.
Surprised we bet so much. I guess it's cuz our range is so condensed.
We're obviously jamming. No, Louis, you cannot bet thirty five.
Bluffs that we wanna.
Thirty five here?
It loses one point four. He just like has like ace, king, ace, queen almost every time. Yeah.
Alright, three bet.
Alright, we got some money out of king, king.
King six suited.
Yeah, fifteen percent.
Three bet.
Thirty six.
Last.
I've been doing better lately.
Five bet jam.
The queen eight. King seven, king six.
If you just do the shit over and over and over again, you learn it eventually, right?
Yeah, yeah. Pick up more stuff that you've been missing.
Yeah, it's so good.
So ten, nine, maybe, maybe, I don't think we get to go over half pot.
Well, this is a range bet, right? We just bet small.
Maybe.
Uh, I don't know that it is really a range bet. It's a, it's, it's locked up equity. There's a straight on board.
Any two here.
Ah.
I think it's a range bet, but it's still gonna mix sizes.
It's just a jack eye board in my mind. Am I wrong?
I think so, cuz I think there's a big difference between this and like.
It's rainbow. Jack eye. It really.
Yeah, but.
Nine, ten or nothing.
Locked up equity, like.
It's just nine, ten. It's not like there's sides to it or something, you know?
He has.
Not really, it's just that small. Just a jack, a dirty jack eye.
Yeah, remember, he's also started to fold some of his offsuit jack that he raises here. So Jack's probably pretty good for us when we're in a three bet pot.
Just an arrangement.
Mainly arrangement, yep. And mainly just twenty five percent, like you said. Don't make it, don't make it too hard, right?
Yeah. Great turn.
I don't need to keep baring this hand.
Well, if you think about your range, Tim. Like you like to be polar. I think this is the spot to be polar, right?
Ugh.
Think about your king seven, you have a pair, king eight to have a pair.
It's like feels like a zero.
The wine is missing, king six is missing.
Queen nine.
Didn't, you didn't. Exactly. We, we have queen nine, we. We have.
Queen nine is a good one as well.
We have.
Still gets a mace size to fold that are gonna float. I, I don't hate a barrel here, the same.
I'm on, I think I'm on board.
Amazing as well.
Thanks, check.
Uh.
Roger.
I can see it going either way.
So throw out a little. Give him a little B fifty?
I think you're right, Louis. I, I think we have to.
We got a blast.
It's time to give up.
Blast.
Scotty. We blast.
Fifty four percent giving up.
You.
Yeah.
Fifty four percent is more than thirty eight percent.
Can't give up every time here, that's for sure.
Although I will admit, two point six.
Sliver of fifty four percent. Sliver of fifty four percent.
We rolled high though, so.
Yeah.
Here we go.
And we still, and it's still a check. It's still a double, it's still a check mark. I guess cuz are we, are we in the opposite thing? The rolling high is, you take the higher?
Oh, I think, yeah, maybe the high number is the passive action.
And I was.
Well.
All the cookies?
All, all the cookies.
That's probably.
I'm sorry we got this far, but.
Sixty percent. You're not jamming unless you have a straight, right? Or a full, I mean, like there's not a lot of range wants to jam, so.
I need jack, no?
Get a lot of bluff.
I'll go sixty percent or give up. Depends on my mood.
Oh, what do you do with a jack here, Ken?
Same size.
Okay.
It's hard to get called by worse.
No, that's fair, but the.
What, what do you do with kings here?
Same size. Kings, I might check back kings, honestly. Yeah, I'm checking kings back.
Might not be supposed to check kings though, right? We probably can bet.
What about queen ten?
Queen ten's a good bluff, sixty percent.
Queen ten, I, I, but queen ten, I continued on the turn.
We've got turn.
I think queen ten and queen nine make okay.
That turn.
Bluffs or give ups now. The ten and nine aren't so good. If we had hearts, we would give up. I mean, we're definitely bluffing here. We have to be bluffing.
Yeah, we, we kind of unblocked all of his continued draws here, which is really good, so I think I'm gonna bet and I'm. I'm probably going forty seven.
Peter, which.
I wanna go a size down.
Peter, which continued draws? Are beating us? Ace nine and ace ten, right?
Yeah, and ace high hearts.
So they could still fold like, I don't know, ace seven apart, maybe like ace eight?
King eight.
King eight, like he might still fall, he might fall, I mean, you know, he's got pocket pair, maybe much.
What did you say, Ken?
To me, he's enough to get, get the job done.
Yeah, like ace high hearts, king high hearts.
Sorry, Ken, what was your sizing?
I mean, king, queen's gonna fold, right?
The red one, Louis, thirty three point five chips.
Okay.
Don't blame him.
No bueno.
Not quite enough.
It's a fifty.
It's a mistake, but it's not a blunder. I'm happy, I'm fine with that.
It's the right idea.
Does he fold those for the saint? Does he fold nines at for the smaller size?
I think so.
Let's look. That's all I really care about. If I'm getting king, queen to fold, pocket nines, an eight X, seven X, some ace eyes, I think sixty percent is plenty to risk. Personally.
Uh, sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's never using sixty percent. It's. Check or all in forty seven. What do you wanna see, Ken? If you get? Nines to fold?
What's he fold?
There's nothing.
Yeah, if you click the.
Yeah, he folds fifty.
Nines, tens, queens, uh, some seven, eight X, king, queens better than us.
Even though there's nothing, it might have an okay response still.
Yeah, so it's straight, but not a blunder, but even under pairs, he's got under pairs still in range or folding. Get beat us, it's plenty.
Who knows what your opponent will do in game with nines?
Right?
It's so random. I think if you size up a little bit, you might be able to control them a little better, though. Manipulate them into folding.
Yeah, but you're still getting the king, queen beats us, uh, king ten, king nine, smaller pairs, like they're all going away.
Check back.
They all went away on flop return. King, queen.
Oh, there was some on the river there.
No.
Oh.
And I still have like almost forty bigs to play with when I get called. And I don't feel so bad. I don't feel like I punted.
I wanted to bet the draw.
Yeah.
We have no, the ten is dirty though.
Okay.
Like you don't really wanna hit the ten.
Raise it up.
You're gonna max, right?
Oh.
Four bet, four bet.
No.
Do it.
No.
Hey.
Get away.
Close to a good pop, close to a good flop for us.
No, right?
Seventy five percent.
Half.
No way.
Twenty five.
He don't have six.
Fifty.
You could go seventy five if it were rainbow, potentially.
That, the, I thought the two tone pushes it up.
Not from what I learned yesterday.
Rebet, rebet pot.
That's the mix in.
Not single raised.
It's a double burger.
It does, but you need high cards and then you need equity.
Right. We have equity.
The idea was that on a two tone board, our over pairs have less of a crushing. Grasp on the equity cuz their flush draws will have decent equity always, so we don't size up as big cuz we just have less equity.
Gotcha.
Okay. So here.
We don't wanna just like isolate him to king, queen of spades every time.
Not happy. Not happy. Genuinely lost, I kinda wanted back because I got a gutter, ace is gonna be good for a decent portion of that range, I got a lot of stuff that's not gonna fold, we're gonna have to triple probably. On brick flush. Pleasurals.
We have three betters though.
I have no idea.
But no, not good for rich.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that, Ken, I think we can go like half.
When I'm lost, I check.
Actually, wait, the ace is gonna slow down a lot of our range, it's gonna be bad for all of our overpairs. We do have some like ace X that bet flop, but. Maybe not as much, so maybe we go more polar here with the twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Uh, hear me out, yeah. Hear me out, with S P R approaching three, a lot of our bluffs are gonna include spades and hearts. And this hand does not have any of those things, and like all of our spades and hearts are candidates, and that's a lot of hands.
I just wanna hit the ten.
I mean, same.
Don't we wanna check back sometimes with, um?
I just wanna.
I mean, yeah, for sure, but, but like. Well, you'll see a lot of them in.
I'm showing it down.
Oosh.
This is actually a great river to bluff, isn't it?
Yeah, unblocking, unblocking spades and hearts.
Checking back.
Kings, queens.
A weak ace, I don't know, it's a weak ace, like, couldn't we check back turn when we have like ace three? Especially ace three spades.
Yeah.
Ah. I thought this would allow our overpairs to value bet again, like kings and queens would be more happy to bet. But maybe not.
Ooh. Gross.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet kings or queens there, if I mean, if, if, if we had them, I, I would be really happy to check it down and. And go, oh, good, I probably will win, he probably doesn't have an ace.
I'm thinking, oh, you checked river, I'm always good now, I can get value from.
No, you're, I'm.
Ten, nine.
I'm. I'm sometime, I'm, I'm good now more, but more than before, but I'm not getting called.
This might be a hamburger.
I mean, I'm not good.
Just fold maybe.
Thanks.
So, like, calling is fine, right? But today we have our zeros.
I think with a series, we have to call and then not fold.
I think ace ten, king ten not.
Yeah.
I fold. I think this one calls a little bit, mainly folds, like calls and folds.
So even the cereals.
It's an unbalanced hamburger, although to be fair. King of spades and hearts is my highest, uh, combo, so.
Fold.
Yep, love it, a call, mostly fold.
Come on, Tim, you don't change your suits around every day.
No. Unless, if you guys start figuring it out, then I'll, I'll figure about it when I'm on the table with you guys, otherwise, good. Um. But yeah, you, you three bet the offsuit jacks a fair bit, you called the offsuit ten, you fold a lot.
High frequency follow.
Ooh.
Life is good.
Eddie.
So. This is a range bet.
Little city.
We bet the need here. Question is, does our hand wants to size out?
Yes.
I think it does. I mean, yeah, I think twenty-five's fine, it's probably mixing, but fifty is great as well, I think.
Think we blocked everything, so we wanna bet small, no?
And ten percent.
I would say. Don't block spades that are contin, gonna continue, we don't.
No, I don't.
We don't block.
Yeah.
I'm not.
I don't wanna go ten.
Ten percent, I'm more like twenty-five percent.
We have a blast.
I, I will say.
Lot of ten percent.
No, fifty.
He folded?
Yeah, the ultimate wet board for us. We bet range.
Okay.
Raise.
Just had to throw it out there.
Raise.
Fold. We rolled a two, fourth.
Yeah.
What does your cereal say?
Fold.
Hmm.
I don't know.
What does a jack say?
It says, ooh.
What does Jack say? No, no one knows that, huh?
Hmm.
We know that one.
You do, maybe.
Maybe.
Who else?
What?
See?
Well, I can know it, I know it.
Oh, Tim.
Never fold.
A relic of twenty twelve.